Village Planning Commission meeting tonight. Pay respects to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, welcome everybody tonight. I'd like to have a motion that, excuse me, let's call the roll please.
For, uh, Justin Tyler?
Here.
Tom Schultz?
Here.
Lori Hallam?
Yes.
John Mole?
Here.
Justin Keller?
Here.
Uh, Steve J. Gassar?
Here.
Scott, where is Anthony?
I'd like to make, I have a motion for the approval of the agenda for tonight, July 16th, 2023. Approval of the agenda.
Mr. Keller, I'll make a motion to approve, uh, tonight's agenda, August 20th, 2023.
Support.
2024.
Well, I'm not supporting that. Aye.
How about approval of the minutes, June 18th, 2024?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from July 16th, 2024.
How do we get, okay, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are they, are they June 18th or July 16th?
We've got some.
Both.
It's June 18th. You have the wrong set of minutes in there?
Oh, I thought we were, I'm sorry. My, I thought we were doing two sets a month.
We didn't want to have a July meeting.
That's right.
So.
So I wrote down, okay. So let's back up a little bit. We approved the, uh, agenda for tonight.
August 20th.
Correct. And then now we're going to approve the minutes for June 18th, 2024. We did that. We all good? Uh, I'd like to make a call to public for any public comment, if anyone may have. We'll be limited to three minutes. I see nobody want to make a public comment. Let's go into new business. Tonight we want to discuss PC 24-09 site plan review for a 12-unit apartment building, 52 through 56 North Washington Street, Oxford, Michigan. Zoning C1 transition, commercial building district transition applicant, Mr. Snyder. Uh, would you like to, let's start off with the applicant? Then we'll talk to Mario and then we'll talk to the fire department and then we'll go into questions.
Uh, Mr. Chair, will you have my computer connected? If we can turn on the TV, we can have, utilize the, uh, site plan for everyone to look at. We have the.
Does anybody know how to turn on the TV?
Well, see, now I am not really technologically savvy, but. Well, I guess if you do, it's pretty good on, I can do that.
Hopefully it's our HDMI.
I'm brilliant.
Twenty-first century.
All right, good evening. My name is Jim Sharp from Wood Sharp Engineering, representing, uh, Mr. Snyder who's here. He needs to chime in with any additional, uh, comments regarding any of your questions. So just to end brief, you've probably all seen the site plan application that's been submitted. Uh, whether you can do a quote, we're an apartment building, uh, North Washington. Um, we're not requesting any variances or anything for the project itself. Um, everything that is being proposed as well, you get the orderings. The property consists, uh, there's actually two properties there, so we're going to attend, um, the second approvals that we will actually combine two properties into one, uh, in order to make things happen. There is an existing driveway, uh, exists. We're going to be recontinuing that slightly. Um, the property is north of a Steve Diamond Road, um, building, just for everybody's reference. Uh, so we're going to be moving the driveway, um, pretty much adjacent to Steve Diamond Road. That will require M dot permits. We also need some M dot permits for, uh, for water main work that we'll be doing as well. And so we're already got, we're already to permit, that we go through the design process. Uh, the driveway will then wrap around to the backside of the building to a parking lot consisting of 20 parking spaces, which meets the, uh, ordinance requirement. Um, in front, we are going to, uh, because we're going to have to move the driveway, we'll have, we'll have to kind of blend in the streetscape, so we'll get some of the pavers and so forth that are out there right now. There's a great paper that's in there, so we'll be adjusting some of that as well. Long area up front, um, with a monument sign for the multiple apartment complex. Uh, the building itself is set back 15 feet from the property line or from the right-of-way, which meets the, the village requirements as well. Some stormwater, we're probably, we're going to be proposing underground stormwater underneath the parking lot there. The sewer actually runs to the rear of the building. There's an existing sanitary sewer in the, um, back of the property, and so we'll be connecting to that. And as I mentioned before, some water main, unfortunately, it's under the road lay of M 24, so we will have to be carrying on the portion of the road plate in order to access that, um, on the way around it. But in general, that's, that's kind of been in a nutshell. Um, I guess we'll just kind of let you, let Mario run through his comments. Um, I don't think that there's anything in there that's, you know, not manageable or that we can't accomplish there. And again, we're looking for our, you know, final site plan approval tonight so we can move forward with all our engineering plans and, uh, you know, whatever.
I, do we like to hear? The only question I have, this is, you're looking for final? I thought we were here for preliminary.
With regards to, uh, based on the comments we've been given as well, uh, right now, I'll look at my list, but it does seem like, uh, in theory, they could do final, uh, but you have the option.
Okay, we'll talk about that later. You want to move into Mario now? Jim, let's.
Remember your processes. I mean, we're fully, you know, we believe that this is ready for final, but I mean, if it's preliminary, if it's, uh, you know, approved administratively or however, you know, previous comments, I know we can do that.
Okay.
It's ready for final, Jim.
Jim, can I ask a question? I'm a lady. What does this say?
I'm looking at there. I'm still glad you can't see.
The, the flat metal roofing panel.
Okay.
Flat metal panel roofing.
What I'd like to do is let Mario speak and then the fire chief speak or his representative, and then we'll go into questions if it's all right with the board.
To this site, one of those things we can point out is that it is in our C1 Transition District, but it's also within the Form Based Code overlay. Um, so as I already mentioned, the site is comprised of two individual lots, about 90,000 feet deep, and is ready. As proposed, uh, this would be a 12-unit apartment building, um, with apartments in the rear. And by this being both C1 Transition and an overlay, uh, this metropolitan building is a permitted building type in the C2, uh, C1 Transition District because of the, uh, the Form Based Code overlay district. So the building and the use are permitted, permitted by right within this, on this particular lot. The applicant has already acknowledged they will be combining the lots as a method of procedure to ensure comprehensive ownership of the entire lot. Based on the dimension requirements within the C1 Transition District, uh, the proposed building location and its dimensions are in compliance with all standards of the C1 Transition District and with all standards of dimensional requirements of zoning. As I mentioned, this is in the Form Based Code overlay. There are certain requirements with regards to visit position of the building in relation to the parking, for some of the components of the building itself. And as proposed, this building does comply with all of these requirements such as a parking being to the rear of the building. You require a certain amount of transparency with windows and door walls along that frontage. And everything as proposed, out of these evaluations, is in compliance with our Form Based Code standards. So as proposed, this would be in compliance. When it comes to the building architecture, so the applicant is going to be proposing, or is proposing, I should say, a mix of a horizontal and vertical metal siding along with a polished, kind of, mix. They're going to be utilizing cable railings, uh, on the balconies, uh, horizontal cable railings, and then sliding glass door walls, uh, used for access to either balcony or to the ground patios on the first floor. You're going to be having, uh, a contrasting roof pitch. Portions of on the north and south side will be raised at the middle and going down in a two-twelve pitch, and then there will be a higher, uh, raised roof in the center of the building that will be running from west to the east. So as proposed, uh, you know, one of, some of the things that might seem, uh, unique and different is the fact that, um, they're utilizing materials not always used in natural design, but they, they have been used. One of the things we would request is that, that the elevations have to be revised just to note the colors of the materials that are being proposed. Mainly to ensure that the masonry, the concrete masonry isn't just standard masonry, some type of, uh, whatever, whatever color is being proposed. You know, for example, the fact that currently gray is very popular in modern, in current, uh, contemporary construction building practices. So depending on what applicant chooses, uh, and how they're related with the other materials. So as I mentioned, while the, uh, the style, based on this location, by ordinance, it does request that the building be a common and consistent area. However, there are no multifamily buildings within this area. Single-family structures to the north, which is traditional single-family construction, utilizing horizontal siding. And then to the south, while not in this district, further south is a historic. So, you know, there is the option of designing this building to complement or to extend the historic character of the downtown. The applicant has taken an approach of being a very modern build. The good thing about the design is that with the contrast in materials and with the various types of materials, it is, it's not a boring, monotonous building. It is actually very contemporary, very modern in style and design. So it's just, and it's just utilizing current material. When it comes to the off-street parking apartment specific for the ordinance, uh, there are, um, a set of standards based on the number of bedrooms within units. Within this particular, uh, proposal, they're having most two bedrooms per unit. Within our ordinance, they're required 1.5 parking spaces per each unit. And then in addition to that, they are required to provide around zero parking, uh, parking spaces per each unit for a, to be designated as a guest parking space. So with the configuration of the proposed, uh, apartments and the number of bedrooms in those apartments, based on our zoning ordinance, they're required to provide 20 parking spaces and they have provided 20 parking spaces. So those 20 parking spaces include both the required, uh, parking spaces for the residents and what's allocated for guest parking. So in that aspect, in that aspect, the proposal configuration is in compliance with the zoning ordinance standards. Regardless of landscape, the applicant has closed their landscape plan and has all the details with regards to materials, including the lining of that, you know. One aspect of the building ordinance is that we do require, along, uh, public right-of-way, one street, residual street tree, or 4D linear level right-of-way. So the landscape plan does, the landscape plan that needs to be revised, provide three residual street trees within that Washington Street front yard. Speaking of the applicant engineer, they have noted that there is one existing street tree in the streetscape of the city, um, excuse me, the village. So that, so the planning commission does have a review with regards to landscape standards as to whether to count that existing tree as one of the existing, uh, one of the required. You also have the ability to modify that, uh, standard based on the configuration of the front yards. There is a 15-foot setback, as noted, between the street, the, the right-of-way in the front of the building. It seems to me like there could be some, some space available to, kind of, type of trees, but I would rely on your recommendations as to what would be appropriate. Some other alternatives could be swapping out, um, each tree for, say, for a certain number of shrubs, say, like, and whatever, you know, you would determine, say, five, five shrubs for each required tree or something like that, to create a, to enhance the existing proposed landscape. Regardless of lighting, there are just three main issues. One, I need to detail, we can, uh, that we're clearly, uh, you can keep, you know, running a number of fixtures that propose, like a graphic that show three fixtures, like, sure, there's a very specific, like, four metric plan, and then six fixtures. And then, um, we have to, the landscape plan, lighting plan doesn't do the logistics to have the light fixtures mounted no higher than 15 feet, which is required in zoning ordinance. And then one other thing we recommend is that due to the proximity of the light fixtures, you can add a light fixture, to utilize a shield on the west side of the fixtures. It's typical shielding, it just, it's a method that's commonly used to make sure that the light is directed, in the appropriate location. In this case, all the light would then be directed towards the parking spaces and would reduce the amount of glare to the, to the residents in the apartment. It's a simple shield, it's a modification of a fixture, where each of the light bulbs will just redirect that light. One other specific of the zoning ordinance, excuse me, of the site plan would be regards to the dumpster enclosure. They are proposing utilizing, uh, rolling hand cards. They have a, they have a configuration, but where those hand cards would be shielded would be in an enclosure. Unfortunately, I'm just not as familiar with the options available in this particular region of the village for, uh, that, that option. So, and how that function will result in the number of, uh, rolling hand cards on the Washington Street right-of-way or without being another location, perhaps on these street, uh, first thing. So we just, uh, as the applicants provides the number of, uh, rolling hand cards that will be provided and to make sure that the proposed size of the enclosure compensates for that. And then one other detail is that while the applicant is proposing a six-foot higher level of this, the ordinance only allows for a maximum of 30 foot, 30 inch, not 30 foot, 30-inch high fence along the front, uh, in the front yard. So that would just have to be modified. So as proposed, uh, this new, uh, proposed apartment building will provide additional housing opportunities in the, in the village. It's, uh, enclosed proximity to the downtown. It's going to be adding to our residential options for existing new residents and it will be, uh, it is in substantial compliance with our ordinances from the zoning. There are some, we, what we believe are minor administrative items that could be addressed with modifications of the plan that is reviewed administratively. I would recommend approval of the site plan, uh, even contingent upon, uh, applicant addressing issues in the letter, applicant submitting that, uh, qualification, verification of the function of the dumpsters, and then any notes of the village unit within here.
Mr. Fire Marshal, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I don't, not really. I mean, my comments, I think are pretty straightforward. We look at two things pretty much, water supply for that building. Obviously, I didn't put fire hydrants on that road. Our only concern was, there's nothing listed to where the FTC or the fire department actually is on that building. There's circumstances, for how far away that would be to have fire hydrants. I can't imagine they would put it in back of the building, but if they put it back there, I have a book, those problems. Access to that building, I think the width of that driveway would require no parking sign on the other side.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, I'd like to open it up for the planning commissioners.
Oh, I.
You go, I'm done.
Okay, sorry. I have a couple of questions. Mario, um, the, is there a height, um, restriction in the C1 Transition District with that overlay?
There is, it's three stories.
And is that a number of feet? Is it, do I have that right? Is that 40 feet?
Yes, I do believe that is 40. I will confirm that, but I do believe that is the answer.
Um, I'm looking at, if you want to check, it's three, section three, dot four, dot six. So, um, I didn't notice on the plans, on the elevations, what the, the proposed height is.
That fills us in the whole, like, what's happening? I think it's the elevation. Yeah.
I believe I measured it off, and it wasn't.
Yeah, it's not in C1.
I know it is.
But it's not on the prints.
It's not on the prints, so if need be, that can be, that should be added. I did measure off, it's on the scale of the building.
Okay.
And then, I mean, I'm just.
Mr. Sharp, do you know what that height is?
I do not.
Sort of the 10 foot per floor.
10 foot per floor, so 30 plus a little bit of the roof line there, so 35 maybe. I do not know that number.
Let me get that to you in a second. But it is a three, three stories of 40 foot, as it happens. And then, as this is a pitched roof, uh, the height is measured to the midpoint between the peak and the rest of this particular structure. So you can take, I, the note, this is in my marker plan, I can measure the height right now for you to confirm, but I'm confident that it is in compliance with the.
Okay. All right, that was one question I had. Um, I also, um, have a question about whether, is that roof structure doing anything on top aside from shedding water? Does it, does it have storage under it or in that attic area or what? What is that? Is that a void?
Yeah, I mean, it has attic area, obviously, up there, but there's not going to be any storage or anything.
Okay. Okay. And, um, the, I guess the last thing, uh, I would like to say or ask is, how did this design get chosen for this spot?
I chose it.
You chose it? Because, um, it, it does seem a lot like the downtown character, and so I was wondering what your thoughts are about that.
Well, it's really who, who's going to lease the building. And today, that building is designed to appeal to people with a 25 to, say, 40 age bracket, single, high income. I've got two granddaughters that work in Chicago. They both make over a hundred grand a year. They're not looking for an old building to live in. They want something new, contemporary, garbage disposal, air conditioning, washer and dryer. They want a deluxe thing. And we are fortunately in an area where we currently have one new hospital attic, 35 million dollars. And at some point in time, we're going to have another, a 23 acres. So there's going to be a lot of high-income people. Believe it or not, this property, those houses were demolished in 2008. That property's been sitting vacant for 16 years. And we haven't built an apartment building in this town in over 20 years.
Um, so I understand that logic. It, it makes certain sense. However, I don't agree that the only kind of building that people would want to move into has to necessarily look this way. So, um, you know, that, that's up to, uh, you know, it's a personal decision. But I do feel that that building's style is very, uh, out of context with the entire strip, even, uh, next to Steve's Automotive, that all those buildings in there use red brick, all of them have gable front facing, um, including Steve's Automotive. And then the two current existing single residential properties also have a, you know, kind of traditional look. So in my opinion, um, even if the materials included like a red brick, I feel like this design, which is very cool, um, it's very urban, it's very industrial, but it doesn't feel like downtown Oxford to me. So that's.
It's not in downtown Oxford.
Understood, but the, but the, but the general view of that street is downtown Oxford. So that's my opinion. So that's what I wanted to express. And then I do feel like the two street trees out front are going to be important at this site. And I think that, uh, appropriate trees could be found for even that minimum strip of green in the front and that that would actually enhance the property residential or, you know, otherwise for people using the downtown.
Yeah, I don't have to put up trees in there.
Um, and I don't.
But where would the trees be located? Would the trees be intended then to be in the front yard?
Well, that's.
The area between the fence and the sidewalk, because I really don't want to get into tearing out the existing brick pavers and so forth that are in there with the tree grates and things. As it is, we have a light pole and an existing.
They'd be on the front.
Well, I, I'm going by what Mario was saying, that he thought that, that, that green space in front might be able to accommodate.
I'm just trying to get clarification, is all.
Oh.
So, I'm not arguing it, I'm just.
Yeah, I mean, just sure, this is the landscape plan. It seems like you have seven feet between here and the, and the, and the fence. So you're between your landscape and the fence.
Light pole here, there's an existing tree in a grate here in the pavers, maybe one over here.
Yep.
It doesn't mean they have to be enormous trees.
No, yeah, oh, you know.
We definitely would.
Correctly, so that way that it's, it's fine over growth, it doesn't impact a building at all, something that's a little bit more taller.
Willow trees, some.
Get down, bud.
Just kidding, get down, bud. No.
And I think, I would like to see a land, something addressed in the landscape about the trees, but I, um, and I also wonder about if this is going to come back with a plan somehow. Mario, if we adopt new landscape standards, would they, they apply to this?
I wouldn't, because the applicant has applied.
Got it.
Previously, and so the ordinance is applicable to them, or it's on the books right now.
Okay. All right, that's, that's it for me.
Yeah, I, I also, I think that a brick front would do a lot with this property. Um, and I also, you're, you're talking about, about the fence that goes around, around the building and since we're, we're really excited that we're going to be getting 12 new residences that want to walk, that might want to walk to our downtown businesses, be patrons. And I was wondering if there's any ability to add openings, like, in the gate to the back. Uh, so like, next door, it's, right now, it's like if it's an auto shop, which people probably won't be walking to, but in the future, it might, it might not be. And I would love to be able to have people walk from the, the back, right, right down to our, like, the neighbor business and, and get to the downtown, that's something that, like, is capable? Or is there already a fence from the other, other business there?
I wonder if a gate show on the back somewhere?
Yes, there's a, there's a gate in the back, but the fence is history because there's no sense putting in a 30-inch fence. So there won't be a front fence, so they'll have ample opportunity. There is a sidewalk along the south side of the building, so they can enter up the patio or they can come out the back and walk down the sidewalk alongside the building and the downtown.
The 30-inch restriction is the front, or it's not the back?
Yeah, but 30 inches in the front is the one, so.
Okay, well, I, I thought you were talking about 30.
And maybe you can step over a 30-inch fence, so.
Well, yeah, but it's intended to define an area, it's not intended to, you know, protect a piece of property. And so the only thing about it, I mean, it's definitely your choice, but, um, you know, I would think having that defined line would, would, would add a sense of privacy to the residents and they'd rather use their, we just daddy over.
That's going to have heavy landscaping, so.
True.
The landscaping will be a clear line of differentiation.
So the area, the area that we're talking about, obviously, is this right here. Um, that's the fencing and just pan off to the side there a little bit. You can see the type of fencing that was being imposed right here.
Right.
But that's not allowed, so.
So, so.
That was a 6 foot, and the reason for that was, yes, this is, but it's running long M 24. So we're trying to provide a little bit more privacy. I mean, if 30 inches is the standard and that's what we have to go with, I guess, then that's what we do. But that was the reasoning behind that, that fencing there was to provide a little bit of additional screen. People could grow some vines on it, get a little bit of privacy in there. Yes, we'll have the plantings, um, some of the. get a little bit of privacy in there. Yes, we'll have the plantings, some of the little plantings around the fence itself, but that will. So I guess we'll leave that to the planning commission's discretion, as to whether the six footer or the thirty-inch.
CJ, to answer your question, on the, on the southern boundary, so this is the closest line adjacent to, they're, they're proposing a private vinyl fence around the entire rear yard, and then, I guess the only issue with that, there is, it does not appear to be a gate proposed, but that's also probably because it's, if you cause a private property. Oh, yeah, there's a private, there, excuse me, there's a gate back here.
Now, it was, well, that was more for access.
One of my list talks about that gate. Does that go to private property, or does that go to easement?
Right now, it would go to private.
Go to private property.
Yes.
Why would we want to encourage people to go on someone else's property?
For the national government, we're beginning to look at that for our landscaping.
And that was another discussion that was going to be had with the Steve's Automotive property, because the dumpster is basically right next to that gate there. The way that that property is shaped, it's like a T, almost, and so those rolling hand carts, which was brought up in the review, we were going to see if we could come up with an agreement with Steve's Automotive to take those rolling hand carts through that fence. So you can see where Steve's Automotive, where they keep their dumpster back there, and go down there. So, we were thinking that we could come out the back and do the rolling hand carts in that area with an agreement. Otherwise, they would have to most likely be pulled in M twenty-four, or, or some agreement made with whoever the contractor is at the time.
Can, can you explain, like, so when you say rolling hand carts, you're just, garbage cans?
Residential cans.
Yeah, okay, so, okay, so we're talking residential cans, not, because when, when you're saying carts, I'm thinking.
So if you look at fifty-three North Washington, which is a building I built, that building, for some bizarre reason, was allowed, but they just did it. They tore out the six thousand dollar dumpster that I put in there, and they're using rolling hand carts for commercial building.
Rolling hand cart, or a, whatever, a fifty gallon, you know, fifty gallon trash can.
The thought is, we don't have this agreement with Steve's. We would like, or you would like to put hand carts there, have them accessible to the waste hauler there. Are you planning to have hand carts closer to the building as well, and then towed out there for pickup?
No, they accept the building, they get their cars, they take their trash with them, they put them in the dumpster.
So, the people in the building will take their trash, bagged trash, to the back, through that gate, and put it in the dumpster, in their hand cart?
Put it in the rolling carts.
Rolling carts, okay.
Just like you do at home, you take your trash out of your kitchen, you put it in the rolling cart, you take the cart down to the curb.
So does each apartment have a rolling cart, or a trash can?
Yes.
Well, we're going to have garbage disposal, so they're going to maybe not have crazy amounts of trash to see.
So we may or may not be able, but this area that's proposed is hot, we can do here, there is a vinyl fence to protect the, to be adjacent property owner, but those garbage cans, those small garbage cans, will be placed in this area, there would be one for each of the units in there. And I guess if we can't work an agreement out with Steve's Automotive to take them back by the dumpster, then those would have to come out onto M twenty-four, most likely down this sidewalk, but they would have, they would come out M twenty-four.
Well, not necessarily back into the site.
Or the truck would come back into the site, yes.
Joe, would, would, would they be allowed to have them out front?
We, we have multiple, well, the Home System of North Hills have a curbside pickup, there's two of them, just the Home System of North Hills.
Oh, okay.
On the south side, near Bryce, we've got our CDA, or DDA, he has a tourist weekend hall, they all have curbside pickup down south twenty-four as well, South Washington. Commercial ones, generally have their own option, in this scenario, it's east out, it's in the corner of Madison. When I got here, seven, almost seven years ago, that dumpster's gone, and there were even hand carts, like everyone else, garbage cans. We ended up transferring that over to the regular pickup, the truck picks up, the president picks up that, then before it pans out. Three unit commercial, I feel like first to know that, though, kind of what we do.
Because they would potentially have twenty, twenty-four cans, right, because recycle and trash?
Potential. If they did, you're getting, if they use the larger ones, like right now, maybe there isn't that much that's why I need it, so.
Yeah, I would think typically, while, you know, it's up to the apartment management, based on the size and scale of, of the area, you know, having, having, you know, having customers use any, any can, probably should work, and then it can be adjusted by the, by the property manager as they go. If they find that the, the trash cans were just getting too full before pickup, they can request more. You know, that's the main question, like, we don't really want to have twenty-four rolling hand carts.
Right.
Or, or, or even rolling about the twenty-four.
Right, right.
Who's managing?
Who's going to take it?
Who's managing, who's coming out, or?
Right, yeah, that's a question.
I have a concern that I'd like you to add that to the drawings, where you plan to put those trash. You call them hand carts in your drawings. That should be on the drawing. Now, my question is, according to our ordinances, can we use the sidewalk there to store those carts?
The enclosed area, I think.
Yeah, they have a, they have, there's a small fence right here.
I didn't see that in the drawings.
Did I?
Yeah, so it's, it's pushing it out five foot, like twenty-five foot, twenty-five feet long. So from this point all the way down to the north, to the edge of this parking space, this sidewalk would be enclosed at least on three sides with a vinyl fence.
It would not approve for fifteen containers or twenty-four. Not be stored in the front side of the home, or the rest of the. Some people start to keep them on the front side of their home, or, you know, like, when a car rolls around, or every now and then, even people keep them on the side.
So, and then in theory, there, there is that concrete sidewalk on the north side of the building, which does go all the way down to Washington, so they could be brought along the sidewalk to Washington. Once again, I wasn't sure how we function like that. I don't know if the transition, I presume, would, obviously, we have to deal with the priority waste as well?
Uh, well, for the last seven, eight weeks, we do. As such, I'm one, yes. Um, it's not a rosy relationship.
It's not a rosy relationship, right, in that direction?
So, yeah, so GFL was good to work with. Again, we have a few small businesses that, that have their own trash like that. The ones that do it to yourself, they have, you know, hand cart, garbage containers that they use, GFL just pixels that and build them accordingly.
And I might sidetrack, I mean, I know it's an important item, but we're like you, we fully intend to address the issue, have as many cans there. Not too many, we don't want to overdo it, but we will have enough, and hopefully, we can work that out with the neighbor or with, you know, with the garbage company, the garbage hauler at the time.
I would suggest, if you worked it out with the neighbor, that you moved the gate down. I don't know if the property lines allow you to do that. Move that gate down, so they come right out that sidewalk. I don't know if that's doable or not, because I don't know what's on the other side, it's just a sidebar comment. Any more questions?
That gate location is designed to be right where his dumpster is. So, we would put a, we allow it to be right by us, using the same trash off company over the gate, and the trash goes.
Correct.
I have a question about the gate. The gate that's proposed, is it a vinyl matching gate, or is it the chain link gate that is?
No, everything is vinyl, there's no chain link.
Okay, so this chain link gate is not in the final plan?
That should be of, of the same material as the.
Okay, I just want to clarify that, so, there is no chain link gate.
I do have a list of questions, so I have maybe a quick few. So one of the questions that we had was, the building materials and colors, what were you guys proposing?
Well, basically, there are, I'll give you this one.
Just because it was one of the questions that was, that was asked, and.
That's easy, so. So, the, these materials are pretty commonly used, I just took a trip to four states.
Thank you.
The head of Arizona, and Mexico, these, these materials are all over the place. So this particular manufacturer offers twenty-five standard colors and ten premium colors. He also offers, on the second page, wood grain finishes, and there is, what, a dozen or so of wood grain finishes. On the next page, he also operates tile finishes, dimensional tile, black tile, raised tile. So we got a lot of flexibility. And then, I've got samples here for you, but should be according to the next page, there are a myriad of profiles, they're called, whatever styles of the metal, so they're not the same. There's a multitude of different shapes that you can use, and this creates a very distinctive, non-boring book to the building, because you're using all these different types of materials. So, I don't want to take the time to do this, but if you look in this catalog, for example, there is just a myriad of styles that are, well, here's my, for example, over the business, so, multitude of different colors, styles. So you really get, and there's hundreds of buildings that are going to look like this. As I traveled around on a road three thousand mile journey, very little bit of commercial construction, if they were, they were for companies that were going to occupy the building, massive amount of residential apartments. I mean, some complexes had three, four hundred units, and they're all using this type of material.
So have you picked colors yet, or you're just?
Well, here again, it's, it's sort of the last part of the phase, is to worry about colors and textures.
Well, it's the first part of our phase, it's the last part of your phase.
Well, I understand.
I just, because I'm looking at these, and I'm flashing back to the old, was it Pantene color chart?
Not exactly, an amateur at this.
Was that what the DDA used, was the Pantene color chart? And some of these colors are in there. So I'm, I'm just wondering which way you're going. I mean, are we going?
Something that is attractive and appealing, and that areas are well, and you want something.
I'm sure, as an individual building, Chuck, it absolutely will be. What I'm not sure is that it was fitted with the rest of the downtown. So that's why I just want to know what colors you're picking.
If there's going to be, let's just say, or, that, I, I, I don't want to get too gray, I mean, gray is like the popular color. I mean, so I don't want to try and be another gray building, but we want to have something that is subtle and attractive, and does kind of complement the downtown. We're trying to attract a different person here, we're not looking for a fifty-year-old retired. This is mobile building.
Chuck, I don't disagree. I absolutely do not disagree. I'm just, because like you said, if it wants to complement the downtown, now you put it in the downtown.
I've got sixteen buildings in the downtown, I'm not interested in.
Right, but they're all white, so we don't want them to be all white. We want them to have some color.
I'm just telling you, I'm not interested in degrading my properties that I own.
I totally understand.
I own sixteen buildings here, so I know what, kind of what the.
Chuck, do you want to argue with me about for hours? Because we, when I could, we could do that.
We don't, let's.
I believe I heard a mixture of her tongues.
Well, I. I'm just wondering if you have looked at the Pantene color. Do you remember that Pantene color?
I basically looked at gray, it's very popular, but you got to do something more than just gray.
I agree.
Let's, let's leave the color situation as an open topic, and move on, so.
Yeah, so, so maybe what the next thing is, is can you explain, so, some of the water management. So how will that, how will that be handled?
Excuse me?
The water management, just so the stormwater management.
So stormwater management, that'll all be collected in, in a storm system, and it'll be stored underground.
Has, have you done the calculations yet?
We haven't done the calculations yet, but we know what the soils are going to accommodate there.
Okay.
And then it's going to be able to percolate into the ground, so we'll, we'll design our retention system to store the water, and then it'll percolate into the ground.
Okay, so it's going to be a retention system?
It will be retention.
And so that's where, from, you, you believe, from an administrative standpoint, you can handle that, and working with Row and getting that taken care of?
Absolutely.
So from your experience?
Yes.
So just so you know, every building in this town has to have an underground storage system, because M dot does not allow you to discharge into their system. So every parking lot I own, I have two hundred parking lots, every parking lot is underground storage.
The new one that you did with the car wash?
Yep.
Exactly, all underground storage, you know, it's going to be very similar to that, and just knowing the materials and all the other work I do in the area, both private and for the township, I know that the soils are going to be conducive.
Correct. The reason why I'm, so the questions that I'm asking is typically is, in a plan, especially you're asking for a final, you know, so you're asking for, you know, final approval plan, with missing information of, as far as colors, exactly how the stormwater management system was going to be done, so the question that I have is to help me to get to a point where I feel comfortable in, in doing this. The design itself, I, I hope, I, I'm glad that somebody wants to put something there. I'm glad for housing, I'm glad to put something there. I just have to get my, let's say, questions together. So, from a, from, one of the other questions was that the, there was a sanitary sewer easement, that's, that's over there. So is that easement recorded? Yes. Okay, so it is recorded, and it's just, so it just needs to be put noted on the permit?
It is, yes. Okay, it's not noted on, there is a recorded easement back there.
Yep.
And, yep, there is an existing, an existing sanitary sewer line that runs through the property.
Okay, so that, that's.
Yes, and recorded, yes.
That'll be put on.
So, Jim, to his point, on existing conditions, I think we show it, you showed both parcels and the dimensions, or the legal descriptions? Maybe you want to put, including recorded easement?
Understood, yes. Yep.
I mean, a lot of those are handled, you know, withdrawal with the time of the final engineering approvals and the permits and so forth, but. And you're going to get all, all new legal description anyways, when you combine them?
Yes.
Correct. I mean, sometimes Mr. Kennedy just takes one or two, so it's parcel A and parcel B are now legal, three equal C, but he may include a, he may just do a whole new one as well. Yep.
And easement is actually owned by the village. It was transferred from the company to the village, I think, twenty years ago. So the village has jurisdiction over that easement.
So, so we kind of, let's see, we talked about that one. Okay, next thing was the, was the lighting. So there is no photometric plan within the, within the drawings, right? And that's one of the things typically we like to see, especially when something commercial is butted up residential. Because, as all of us know here on the commission, is that we have to, every single sign that comes here, we have to make sure that it has a photo, photo sensor on it, so that if, if it is too bright, that we can go back and change it. Same thing here, we don't have a, you know, photometric plan, so we don't know how bright that's going to be. So that's like, if it is going to be too bright, it's going to be for the residents, so that's one thing.
I think the architect put a detail of the light fixture that is proposed on there, there'll be one light over each of the rear entrance doors, and then there's an existing pole on the property, and there will be a light attached to that. I understand what you're saying about.
Yep. The ones, I think the ones on the building shouldn't be too much of an issue, just the lights on the building, but the one that's up on the pole specifically.
Exactly the same. Every single parking lot, I mean, some of those lights, for example, what's parking lot, those lights all border residential. Every one of those lights.
Correct, but, but a couple things is, it's not part of the plan. You know, but we don't know. Okay, so with that, so it's going to be actually put on the telephone pole, or that's actually the light pole that's?
There's an existing telephone pole there, and there'll be a three bracket fixture, so it'll, it'll shine south and north and east. And if you go back to the site plan that shows the layout of the building and neighbors, so if you look at this, we got Steve's Auto Parts on the one side, and then here, see that little hatch area? And then here, see that little hatch area to the north? That's the residence.
Correct.
That's, the lights are like way in the back there. There's another building back there, but it's a garage. So we got Steve's Auto Parts on one side. We have a residence, but the house is way forward, where the lighting is, way forward. And then we have a fairly big parking lot to the east behind the building and the next residence is, I mean, so it's a long line. And if you, just a little background, if you look at the Edison sheet, it says that they are conscious of light trespass, they call it. So I haven't had Edison redo every one of my parking lots. They've already had theirs all redone. They're all LED lighting. They're all properly shielded. These are adjustable. If the light is wrong, Edison comes back and adjusts it. I mean, they charge a lot for it. They do maintenance, they install them, they fix them.
I, once again, I agree with you on a lot of that stuff. I agree with you. But for us to be up here, you know, but we don't know what you're installing. You know, but we don't know, because we don't have anything in front of us to say, all right, this is how this specific light affects this specific parking lot. That doesn't show it. A photometric plan does show it. So I'm not, I'm not just a.
I believe the issue is the fact that we do have these detailed sheets. These detailed sheets are on the plan. However, they have three different alternatives. This is a light distribution configuration. It's based on a twenty-five foot height mounting. And then it does distribute the light, as I mentioned, in all directions. Type five goes in all four directions. Type three has different directions from the back.
We also want to distribute the light in the direction of light is facing.
No, well, no, that's the thing. Right here, it shows that this light distributes it in these four directions based on a twenty-five foot, and you choose a type five. So the only thing I believe that we need to determine is what light you choose and to make sure that that proplanter is appropriate. Like, for example, one of the issues I was mentioning with regards to adjacent residences is that, and specifically the residents in, have their bedrooms facing the parking lot. It's like you can put a shield, and it's just a, it's a small piece of metal. It goes on the bottom of the fixture. And then instead of this light being thrown in all four directions, it only gets thrown in the front two. So it gets thrown that way, like throws it towards the parking lot and throws it where you want with the parking lot. And so it's just a matter of just noting. So really, this would just involve a note stating simply that, exactly, right over here, like, you know.
Your drawings call out, see photometric plan for external lighting details. Let's put it in. Let's do it.
Okay.
So that's something that I think can be approved administratively because provided, you know, we have direction from the plan, it just says lines with a zoning order, which is, you know, the advocate chooses which one, he shows the photometric plan and we confirm that that, the note and the photometric plan has the correct light distribution.
Understood.
Do you have anything?
I'll do my own to help you with that administrative approval.
Oh, yeah.
Because we're asking for, there's quite a bit of things that we're asking for administrative approval here for this. And the reason why I'm kind of harping a little bit more on the photometric plan is this, is that every time we have a sign that comes up, we have to be here to review it, to make sure that sign is not too bright. So they come here, we try to make some adjustments to that. This is another way of, yes, I hear what you're saying, but saying and showing and doing are three completely different things. So that's why I'm trying to be a little more specific because of that. I'm not, I'm not, just want to make sure it's clear.
Next question.
All right. Okay, so you already addressed the question with the current cut, with working with MDOT and trying to get the approval to change that over, to move that over to the right, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
No, we need a permit from them, yes.
And you believe that that'll happen?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So the next thing was the FDC. So you're planning on, we'll be out front?
Yeah, we have a southwest corner of the building. Southwest.
Yep, okay, so, all right. Because that was one of the things that we didn't see on here as well.
I'm sorry, Justin, what was that?
It's the fire hydrant.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha, okay. Yeah, I didn't hear that. Thanks.
Gatewise, talking about the gates, one of my comments related to the gates was not to have a gate or why the gate, there was a gate going to be a gate back there because you're, because you're trying to walk onto private property. I'd ask that we probably remove those, but if you're going to be working with the, trying to be working to get access there, I'm okay with that. I don't have too much of an issue. As far as the landscaping or the trees itself, I'm okay either or. Like adding two more trees out front or not adding trees, I'm okay with either. Or landscaping plan, I'm okay with, so I don't have any issues there. Mario, a question that I have as far as from the parking spots and just more clarification. So a handicap parking spot is also, you know how we have to have twenty, right? Is the handicap parking spot twenty-one, or does that make it twenty and we have nineteen?
So the ADA standards, you require to be inclusive of the number. So twenty is required. One of them has to be functional for ADA. And they do have it with these.
Okay, that is, right to second, that's all, I think that's all I have.
Well, most of mine have been covered. In regards to the ADA, are any of the apartments, are they ADA compliant?
Someone's in the floor would be.
Okay.
You have an elevator.
There would be an elevator in this building.
Okay, okay. The sign, so there's a, there's a ground mounted sign, correct? And then one on the building. Mario, does that, in regards to the ordinance, the sign ordinance and the allowable square footage, does that calculate correctly?
I did not do a measurement of the sign area, I mean, because that's, they have to apply for a permit for that.
Fifteen square foot on the lot, thirty ounces.
I have an issue with it. I was going to raise about the sign. On your drawing, if you go back to Mario? You already, you seem to have that placed in a location. Is that a good sound location that'll support a foundation for the sign from, so off the road and things like that?
Yeah, it is. I mean, I have a beyond sign collection. That's one of the, we structurally build that in when you build a building.
Yes, sir.
And to your point, location wise, you have a clear vision area to worry about if it comes down to the driveway, the ten foot, or actually, yeah, ten foot to driveway. But so it's plenty far away for that, but wouldn't you talk earlier about the signs or what I started, the fencing and the curbs and stuff, those?
And two trees were added.
Yeah, there's a little outside of that ten foot clear vision area, which is right adjacent to the driveway as well, so. So having the sign further out in the middle like that, I think, creates spot for it.
And the sign? No, 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 go, go. Still not clear on the sign. You're going to come back for a sign permit?
Right.
And you're going to say, I want to put it here. Where you have it on your preliminary drawing right there, is that a good location for measurements and everything for?
Yes. I'd have to see where the redway is too. I think it requires five foot from behind the redway. And I'm not sure where the redway is aligned on that exactly, but I think our ordinance calls for five foot.
It looks like for three sandy signs, it's three foot from the lot line. So with this, it might have to be adjusted, or the scale of it might have to be adjusted accordingly. This is nine foot right here. This dash line is the property line. And it's a little close. But there are different alternatives that could be done.
That's what I'm trying to avoid, all these different alternatives.
Well, the only thing about the sign is that it is, they do require a permit.
I understand.
It's on the general location, but we will definitely be coming back.
It might not go there at all, to your point, sure.
Okay.
If it doesn't, if it doesn't meet sign.
So do I, do I just drop the topic and we move on, or do we, we talk about it more?
Well, without seeing a sign permit and requiring the exact measurements and location of it, it's kind of hard. Right now, I would say that's a place name.
I'll note, it's a concern I have. Let's move on. Tom?
John, Alex, John.
Cover two more of my questions.
Contending upon the sign, meaning all the ordinance required.
It's going to, it's going to anyways. I just don't, I'm trying to avoid coming back. If we have to have variance for this, we have to have variance for this because we don't have enough room. The sign, all those things that we get into.
Oh, variances.
If it's in turn eliminated, we'll come back to you regardless.
Correct.
If it's not, they could possibly get it in on the ADA compliance.
If the sign permit's coming back, then my other two questions are in.
I might not, I might not be here.
Well, it would always come to the planning commission. Yeah, it's in turn eliminated. If it meets the ordinance where they are putting it.
Right, 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 okay, that makes sense.
You're up, Tom.
Let me see. The only, I mean, it's been discussed as well. I, first of all, I agree with Justin. I love the project. You know, I like having that, that the apartments in the village, walking distance. I would like to see the colors, just because my view of what is acceptable and what fits into downtown would be different than Mo's, different than yours. I mean, you know, once you decide on that, I think that's, that's going to be a pretty big piece of property. And, you know, you know, if it's all glass and silver, that's not going to work. And I know that's not what you're doing, and it's an extreme example, but you get my point. I want to make sure that it's, you know, it's going to be.
Go to the elevations, the front, back, go, go. So I don't know if you can see that or not, but we tried to pick, see where those balconies are? Those all have bricks in there. We've tried to use different anglers. There's all brick. The front there, see where those, so the second set of windows, that's all brick. So we've, we've got different materials in there mixed in.
Is that brick? I thought that was block.
No, no, that's, that's not block. The only block we're using is on the sides of the building so that we don't have somebody banging our.
I didn't think there was any.
Car, so they get a block of concrete, not like very expensive siding. So.
Would that be painted?
We're going to introduce these different materials so that we have some brick, we have some tile, we have some metal, and we have some wood, so that it isn't, you know, this is a fairly big job to pick all these colors so that they're all complementing.
Right.
I think it isn't, you know. What I'm hearing is you're, you're okay with the textures? You like the diversification of the textures, but you'd like to see a little more.
Yeah, I'd like to see what, yeah, I'd like to see what it looks like. I mean, yeah.
Probably some of the future might be saying, right now, there is a note that says pilot CMU with an arrow pointing to that middle section.
Right, right.
Traditional, what eight and twelve.
Yeah, yeah, my interpretation of that might be completely different. So I just want to make sure that, you know.
Okay.
Okay, that's it. Mo, do you have anything?
Who owns the property on the east side where the gate is?
That's actually owned by Steve's Auto Parts.
The dotted line, doesn't Steve own to the south?
Steve's property is shaped like an L, so he goes out, he goes all the way back. He goes even beyond where the concrete is.
It's almost like a T.
Where it is, it's a property.
Yeah.
I think it was that part, I thought.
This corner, he owned to about the middle part of there, so he's about three quarters of the way across our property.
Okay. I thought it then went to the north property, so, okay. So it's still Steve's.
So he's not agreed in that he's got quit a bit of grass.
Oh, yeah. That's a fairly question.
I've got some questions myself. I think, I want to thank the commissioners for all the comments they've made thus far. We talked about the sign, its location. I'm more interested in talking about this trash slash waste management plan. How you plan to work that out with Steve Autos, if you plan to go on his property and how that's going to work out. I see a tremendous amount of waste containers on that twenty-five foot through there and the management thereof. Past experiences taught me that's going to be a challenge for you folks. So I'd like to see some kind of a plan on that, what you plan to do with that. The gate ties with that. I'd like some explanation or a little detail on the parking. We've got some parking laid out that we have some ten-foot wide sections. We have some eight-foot wide. We have thirty, if I read this correctly, we have thirty-seven feet from the property line to the, to the back of the building. Is that correct?
It's thirty-seven?
Yeah, that's what, is that?
It's part of the whole easement. It just shows up on the aerial, underneath it.
So.
So these parking spaces right here.
We have the widths. What's the length of those parking spaces?
Nineteen.
Nineteen on both sides?
Nineteen here, twenty-five through the middle, and eighteen and a half.
Okay, so we have, there's room to move around.
Because of the curving there.
What, what type of area are you going to put around that telephone pole? Do you have any plans for that telephone pole?
We just have a couple of bowlers that we're putting in, in front of it so that people don't run into it. Parking space requirement is only nine by eighteen. So that's why some of these, some of these spaces are larger. We made them ten because we can fit it, and personally, a lot of people drive trucks. The bigger the space, in my opinion, the better. So that's why some of them.
I was just trying to figure out how we're going to navigate that.
The eight foot is the minimum requirement for the ADA space. But that's why some of them are ten, some of them are nines, because we just try to maximize it as much as possible.
Okay.
Actually, the part of these space dimensions are required to be a minimum nine by twenty. But then when there's a overhang curve, so that kind of building, that's when nineteen is acceptable to allow for the.
Right, because we have seven foot sidewalk here, so we can overhang there, and we can overhang in the back because of the curving.
Okay, some other commissioners brought up things that I want to highlight very briefly because I agree with them. The building height needs to be added to the drawing. The downtown character, particularly with the color schemes and the character of the building. I have reservations on that. I like the idea we're adding trees to the front, two trees. Just make sure they're not bad prepared. The, the rear gate, I'm struggling with that in the, in the management of the, of the waste. The color scheme, they're not, two or three of the commissioners have talked about colors, so that's, that's going to be important to us.
Okay.
You did a nice job with the stormwater management. I appreciate that. The note to the, on the prints need to be added for the sanitary sewer line. Recorded easement needs, I'm most interested in that as well. The photometric plan, you referenced in your drawings. We don't have it. I'm a strong believer that we need to have a photometric plan. And then I'd like to see number ten, the fire hydrant added, the fire suppression system added to the southeast part of the building.
West, FDC.
Southwest, sorry.
Southwest.
So those are the things that the other commissioners have brought up that I agree with, that are very important, so.
Additional to that photometric plan, the fifteen foot maximum height on there instead of the twenty-five with the, along with the shields?
That's on the plan. That should be on the plan. And that's referenced in your, the shields are referenced in Mario's letter.
In the, in the proposed mixed materials, I would like to see something that references or echoes the residential brick appearance that's used downtown on some of the other modern buildings, so that it is similar, complementary enough. And I, I think the sketch makes it look like those bricks are very large, like blocks. So if you're really proposing brick and tar that front in the facade, I'd like to see that represented that way.
With some color added to it, possibly?
Well, yeah, red brick. But the, the whole point, I think, of the seeing what's being proposed is to see the colors, to see the materials, to be more specific than some of this is. That's my take on it.
I agree. Tom?
Well, yeah, subjective. I mean, the dealership, they just painted theirs, and theirs is all white.
Yeah, but if you look at, you'll know, you know what I'm talking about. If you drive down that strip and you look down, most of those buildings, that's, that's the residential appearance of some of that brick is being used on a lot of the modern buildings too.
So do you think it's okay to be kind of a building like?
I'm not, I'm not addressing that at all.
Tom?
We'll note that to the architect.
Just, have you given any thought of like a e-vehicle charging station or anything like that?
No.
You're, you're our future, but I.
We're both right.
Both right.
Well, the only reason I ask, I mean, it's, it's a new development, it, it's, I mean, I can share my opinions one way or the other, but.
It's probably gonna come.
We can get Steve to put one in by the dumpster.
And use the gate to get to it.
I was just, I was, I was just wondering if you had considered, I was just curious.
You gotta try and do a whole lot of height thing stuff inside the building.
Right.
I could see Bo jumping on that bandway with all due respect, if these were condominiums and they're buying them, but for apartments, I'm not sure that, that's, that's really needed. The township has gotten involved, it's a company that wanted to come in for free to install the charging stations in two locations. That was last October or farther back than that. They have not come in yet, so.
We've got ours.
I wasn't proposing, I was just wondering if you had thought about it, so, just, I was just curious.
Chuck, just let your tenants know that we've got some downtown.
Right, yeah.
Let your tenants know we've got some downtown.
So, do other commissioners have any other comments?
I just wanna ask probably a stupid question, because I'm a terrible, I'm a terrible driver. Don't laugh, I am terrible. Are there gonna be maneuver into all these parking spaces?
So, we are, our minimum requirement is a twenty-foot drive aisle, based on the size of the lot, lot, they're allowed, they're providing a twenty-five-foot drive aisle. So, that will be a good thing. The only issue might be the two spaces on the northern end, and when they're backing in and out, if the truck, pardon, is parked there, maneuvering out. But then again, you know, people in their vehicles probably aren't gonna learn, they'll learn the first time. So, the good thing is with the sign, with the sign look here, but then you've got the dumpsters, so these two edulums might be a little tight. The alternative would be to try and take advantage of this extra width of the spaces on the south, but you're only gonna gain like four extra feet and put it over here. And then your problem you have too is the utility hole there, so it's not, it's not the, it's not for a new driver, but I think the fact that this is in our downtown, the fact that we're, we wanna have a pedestrian area being scaled, this is the kind of driving that someone in a, in a downtown.
Just to let you know, I'm not a new driver, I've been a bad driver from way down.
I'm thinking of my nephew. I don't wanna drive.
He hadn't gone.
Mr. Sharp, I think we're to the point where you might wanna take these comments back and change your drawings, talk with the architect, and possibly bring back something as soon as possible to the board.
Could we, could at least, at least, if preliminary approval, maybe not final site plan, maybe at least, I don't know how the process works here, if there's a preliminary and a final, is it possible to just do the preliminary site plan so that we can start with some of the other things that we need to do?
That's a very good question. How does the, the planning commission feel about that?
So, your options officially, there is no official preliminary or final site plan, but in the past, the planning commission has granted winter approvals. When they don't feel the issues, when they feel the issues that need to be addressed are, can be handled administratively. So, maybe in the past, I'm thinking of the other townhouses over on the west side of town, we did that one time, we gave them preliminary approval and then they had to come back.
All the condos a little?
Condos, excuse me, the condos.
I mean, obviously, we'd like final with contingent on these, handle administratively, but it sounds like there might be a little bit more to chew on than that, but.
That's the thing, the planning committee has a purview. If they think the issue, the list is small enough, they can, they can hand it off to us administratively if they feel that they wanna look at it one more time. They can, they can take your option there, you can table.
Or, yeah, or they can just come back.
You can ask, you can grant preliminary contingent upon issues in act item. Yeah, approval administratively.
I just wasn't saying of the process, if there was a preliminary and a final, but if it's all tied together, then it really doesn't matter. I mean, we know the direction we're going here, so.
I'll give you maybe my two cents. I'm excited about this. I'm excited to have it, I'm excited for this. I think it's a super, like, I'm looking forward to it. Couple things, I'm just looking for a tiny bit more information. I'd like to see colors. We wanna see something here because it is a very prominent spot in the village. Like to see what that looks like, because I think we've all kind of seen that.
Have the authority to dictate colors?
Not dictate colors, we're not, that's not, not to dictate colors. But then also just those couple little small things and that we kind of outlined as well, and that's it. So, I mean, that's all.
I can work with the, the, about the trash thing too, there may be some ways to work. Instead of the carts, you can just stick yourself, go through and have to use the existing dumpster all back. You have, have service three times a week instead of once a week, or something like that. You might not even need an additional dumpster.
Well, I'm not really expecting any blowback from Steve. In other words, he's, you don't wanna get all these people in motion and then things not happen, so, but by whatever, you know, I'm his neighbor, I'm gonna enhance his area while, would he have a problem with another dumpster? And his parking lot, when there's already one there, which is not in the closure, by the way.
Any new dumpster would require an enclosure. That would trigger him having enclosures on his property.
I do have a question, Mario. So, from a preliminary site approval, so let's say we do, let's say we were to do that without having to go back to those things, what, what would be the next steps? What, how would that take us to, let's say, to get to the final approval?
That would be up to you in terms of what items you'd like to see in front of you versus what is other things to handle administratively. For example, when it comes to engineering of the site, while we do sometimes see preliminary engineering, typically, within the village, we've always had the detailed stormwater calculate, not, not the calculations, but the, forgive me, the cut, profiles, yes, the profiles and all those kind of things, those are done ninety-nine percent of the time, we've done those administratively. But the zoning ordinance does say that the planning commission can, is intended to grant approval when they're satisfied with the stormwater solution. In the past, that usually means some note about the site.
Sure, I mean. And I would say the, the stormwater is probably the least of your old worries because we're all, I'm sure this doesn't go to that. You don't see, there's nothing you're gonna see. It's not light, it's not fence, it's not trees, it's not driveway, it's not, you know, light safety, that you see. So, I would, the engineering, I think, typically, we do that after the back anyway, I would say that's almost always administratively done and reviewed by our engineer. It's the other issues that I think you're, and Chuck's point, we all like to see a color and coloring rendering would be nice, it gives everybody a good feel of what it looks like, and then they get on board easier. They still can't have these already convicted, you wanna see this color, that color, right?
No, but I think the earth tones are great, but that still doesn't convey the character issue that I think many of us keep coming back to.
But I think, I think something we all keep in mind is the, your roles in it are, does it need to ordinance? That's definitely the, whether they have a car turn or not, doesn't matter. Whether they're ADA compliant in the home, doesn't matter. I mean, it meets building code, it meets site plan, it meets ordinance, that's what you're really pulling in on. There are things that are feel-good things, or I'd like to see things, are out of your curve, in the, that's, so keep those in mind when you're willing, thinking about putting something off or something that's a feel-good thing.
In other words, you don't really have a vote on the colors.
No, I, I guess we're not.
No, but we could make this meeting last three months longer.
The light photometric plan is in the ordinance, and it is required.
Well, so is the historic character and compliment.
It is in there, that's a.
It is. I just reread it, that's part of what I would kept going back to.
But it doesn't give the bottom-line decision-making of those colors and all.
No, it's recommendations, it's suggestions.
It's a combination of all the issues we talked about.
Right, I'm just saying.
You're right.
Some of those things, like I said, that come up, like, is the interior being planned?
Let's, let's put it this way, if someone adds specific recommendations on colors that they hate or they like, I'm fine with that, but I'm not gonna take my time to design a little frickin' building, all the colors for you people, because we aren't there yet. I'm spending a shit lot full of money where we're at right now. This is not an inexpensive proposition, all these things you want, thousands of dollars.
So, one of the things is, I'm not looking for, to tell you like what colors to use, more or less. It was just a, it was a matter of missing information that's on there, that kind of should have been in the plan, that's what I'm kinda looking for. So, I'm trying to figure out a happy medium where our needs are met, and it's a very prominent spot, and also your needs are met as well, so.
I'm, I'm with you on some of these things, but I'm not stupid, I'm not gonna put lightning at a parking lot that's gonna shine in my tenants' windows or any neighbor. I mean, I'm not stupid.
But it starts by having a plan, Chuck. You gotta put it on the plan.
It's like, don't treat me like I'm stupid.
But don't treat us like we're stupid.
About making sure that the sign, the plans reflect the ordinance required.
I think, I think we need to make a decision whether we need to give preliminary on this or have them come back. What's the board's flavor?
My personal take on this is that the majority of the things can be handled administratively. The FTC, like, the majority. Would I have loved to have seen what, what it's gonna look like, because it affects the downtown for everybody. Long after we're all gone, it still affects everybody that's here. I'm super happy they're spending money out here to put and add additional things.
Are you making a motion?
No, I'm giving my like two cents related to it. I'm, I'm on the fence about giving, going between a preliminary or giving a preliminary approval with contingencies, and then also trying to give that and, or having them come back specifically, adding these things, and then giving approval for it. So, I'm, I'm just.
Let me ask you a quick question, Justin.
Yes.
How many contingencies do you have on your list?
Uh, so.
Just, just a number.
Eight, so technically eight, but I would have, but from a verbiage standpoint, eight plus whatever is in the McKenna letter, the Row letter, and the Fire Marshall letter. So, from a, from that, but there's eight things.
Eight things that aren't.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight specific items.
Are they, are they in the McKenna and Row letters?
Yes, but they're very, they're more, they're very specific about some of that information.
Okay.
And what it consists of is building height, which can be done administratively, to make sure that it is conducive to the height of our ordinance, which, once again, that's kind of administratively, but technically, it should have been in our drawings before we got them. Number two is colors, just because we've all asked, we're curious. The two additional trees that we wanted to add for landscaping, a photometric plan, which should have been in our plans. Note, so, note on sanitary, which is administrative, that's stormwater and sanitary easement. The fifteen meters, so, excuse me, fifteen meters on the light bulb, so you can't go, you can't put the lights up higher than fifteen meters with the side tables.
Fifteen foot.
Fifteen foot?
No, fifteen meters, I heard it.
I'm used to, I'm used to using fifteen meters. And then the, the FTC, so that was, that was the things that I specifically kind of outlined here online, which, those are technically all administrative stuff.
Yeah, I'm leaning towards pre, giving them the preapproval. I'm really excited about the project. I really would have loved to have had the, the look of it, but let's get some people in our downtown, let's get, let's get people moving around, and I'm excited for it. Get some extra tax base.
So, CJ, you said preapproval, or are you looking for final approval?
I was thinking, thinking the, not the final one, the like.
Preliminary.
Preliminary approval.
Whatever, but you know.
Yeah.
Approval with contingencies.
Hold on a second, this is, this is us talking.
So, I, I, I love all the, the lists that you have, Justin, but it sounds like all of those are administrative anyway. I mean, I don't think there's anything that, that needs to come back to the planning commission, is that correct, Joe, or? I mean, I mean, there's, there's some important things that are laid out, but, but as long as, as long as you or someone in the office reviews and agrees that they have been met, I, I mean, I personally wouldn't have a problem with final, because I don't think there's anything that's gonna come to us that we're gonna be able to, as much as I would like to have more input on the colors, that, that we will have that input. Is that a fair statement?
It is, and on the photometric plan, it's not, it's on, shown on the plan itself.
Right, right, exactly.
That's what you're looking for.
Right, right.
I don't.
On location where there's a showing the lights going on.
Correct, because we do have light problems in some properties that should be addressed administratively, and should be being handled from a code enforcement that's not being handled, and I wanna make sure it's being addressed, so that's all. That's the importance.
And of course, engineering, we always work to the role of that. I can work with Mario on the, the updated plans for the elevation height.
Yep.
Nothing else to elevate on the sheets, and then she builds for the preliminary plan, but I'll, Mario's helped with that.
Did you wanna get the fire right?
FTC has a simple notation, location, location.
Tom?
The biggest, hardest part of this project's been turned down in twenty-two.
Did he ask me a question?
Well, he was going to.
I know, and in twenty-twenty, I battled and tried, tried with these folks who owned this vacant lot, while the road was tore up, to run over a three or four-inch line and then a three-inch line from the hoop in the water, and while the road was tore up, and they went through it.
It's always gonna happen within the last three years.
Because somebody's gonna come in and another terrible end to the road, and here we are.
Give me a second.
We're having a sidebar here, we're working on a motion to move things along, so just one moment.
Mr. Chair, can I just quickly ask something, to clarify something you put in your report before we decide on wording here? Near building architecture section, you have, the second paragraph says, we note that the use of CMU blocks is generally more commercial and scaled than residential, the lack of window decoration adds to the commercial scale, we note that the slight changes in materials could be made to create more residential characters for building, the use of windows, door walls, with mullions are more residential, the use of traditional scale residential brick or possibly sport CMU would be less commercial in style, the elevations must be revised to indicate the colors for all proposed materials. So, you seem to be saying that the elevations do have to show all the proposed materials, and you're suggesting the residential appearance of the sport CMU or brick. Am I reading that right?
It's suggested, this suggestion is designed section, and it actually works for applicants, because the applicant is the one that can choose.
Okay.
Just because there are, because within our ordinance, there are no specific standards for it. But the ordinance does have like very broad-based interpretation of architectural style to the planning commission. Officially, there are no, no colors that are mandated at all, but, but in the past, applicants haven't had a problem just choosing a color, because all it requires is putting a note on the existing elevations. I'm not asking for color renderings, I just, you know, normally, you wanna make sure that the, to, in order for the planning commission to be able comfortably determine that the standard listed in the zoning ordinance is met for, which is, once again, a broad statement for architectural compatibility, to know that the applicant isn't proposing a black and yellow building, or, you know, whatever, colors that are, once again, it's not, those particular colors are regulated, but all it requires is the applicant making a choice now and just stating on the plan.
So, if.
Then technically, those, if, if you, if they pick a featherstone red, and then that's not available, and they have to choose, change it to heatherstone red, that gets changed administratively, that's not a big deal, but, but the planning commission deserves the information typically, because then we're not talking about it for twenty minutes, and I mean, you guys know what it is.
Right, right. So, I think my point, my question really is, if that statement or some portion of your recommendation were included, if we're going to word some kind of preliminary approval, will the staff administratively be able to interpret that if it comes back, or does it really need to come to us for approval?
So, on, on the architectural.
On, yeah, the thing about what I was just reading.
Again, if I recall, if I didn't read it for me, it says, recommendation that they should consider these options.
Well, yeah, but the. Well, yeah, but it says the elevations must be revised to indicate the colors. That doesn't sound like a recommendation, it sounds like a requirement.
Poor word choice, I, once again.
Oh, okay.
It's the applicant. It doesn't say shall, it says must, so that, that doesn't have, I'm not an attorney, but that doesn't require a weight of it. But in the same, once again, the idea was providing just casual recommendations to the applicant because the applicant does get to choose. But then you get to decide as to whether that is, and honestly, I would, you know, it's, it's up to you, once again, whether you feel the information provided to you tonight is sufficient to, to make a motion on whatever is being. And then, and actually, I'm sorry, get more directly to your question, Leslie. When, when these things come back administratively, what we would only be, we only have authority to do is make sure they're in compliance with what's in the ordinance. And so we wouldn't be doing any changes.
That would not, okay.
We would not, cause administrative, we, we can't require the mullions or, or, with the details suggested. We can only approve, uh, what's in the ordinance.
Thank you.
My, my only concern is, is that the architectural layout will show us what it's gonna look like on twenty-four. That is gonna be the only three-story apartment complex coming into town from the north and going out as you're leaving, coming from the south. And I think that's very important that we see that and understand the, the earth tone colors that you, that you mentioned. So I look for a motion, if there's a motion to be made?
Uh, okay, I'd like to motion, I, I, I'd like to make a motion to give preliminary site approval for PC twenty-four dash oh-nine, twelve-unit building, fifty-two to fifty-six, in West Washington. Contingent upon a McKenna letter dated August twelfth, row letter dated July the seventeenth, and the actual fire department letter dated July the eleventh, with specific contingencies being addressed, which are building height, colors, landscaping with the additional two trees, photometric site plan, uh, a note with a sanitary easement, fifteen-foot, uh, lights on the poles with shields, FDC location, and then a waste management solution.
Support.
Question, uh, so you're asking for preliminary, not final, is that correct?
Asking for preliminary. Have we had support?
I just wanna, I'm sorry, I just wanna ask one more, just one more question.
Now's the time for discussion for our.
Yeah, just, just, just for my own understanding, so, uh, there isn't, this is, is there anything that's gonna come back from the preliminary approval that we're gonna be able to have any input on? I mean, it sounds like everything, go ahead, Joe.
That's why I have a question too, describing the difference between conditional approval and preliminary approval. Cause typically you've got conditional approval, approval condition on these, um, outstanding items. Preliminary gives the impression that it's coming back for final approval. What has left them to come back for final approval?
The items that we've outlined.
Okay, so, all right, so you wanna see them versus, we'll complete them administratively and then bring them back to you, then, then you can stand for this final approval.
Yeah, because then we get to see the colors, then we get to see the photometric.
And that could be a little bit wild because you can start on all the other stuff.
Then we can see the heights.
Basically, you don't have colors to pay attention to.
I'm not spending another dime until this stuff is resolved. I mean, two and a half million dollars of my money and we're asking over photometrics and three trees and, I mean, let's get serious here, folks. Two and a half million, if you got two and a half million, that's what this building's gonna cost. And you're hassling me over two trees and it's.
With all due respect, we have a motion on the floor, we have a second, we need to take a vote. Would you call the roll, please?
Schultz?
Yes.
Bazzor?
Yes.
Hyler?
Yes.
Uh, Pelop?
Yes.
Nold?
Yes.
Daller?
Yes.
Okay. Great, we have our direction.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Board, let me get my paperwork back up to go to the next, uh, number eight would be old business. And it's review of the landscape ordinance draft amendment. Do you, I'll fill this out, it's, it's, uh, eight thirty-five, would you, if you'd like to postpone this to the next meeting, I'd be fine with that.
What?
If you'd like to talk about it this night, Leslie, you're on.
No, actually, I think it's really Mario.
Mario, you're on.
Very quickly, the landscape ordinance draft in front of you, uh, I've worked in council at Michigan High Line on providing a vision of guidance as to addressing the past concerns of the village. And so if we go, um, we have some specific amendments. Uh, specifically in paragraph F, uh, H four, uh, we had the idea that in addition to the recommended trees that are in the ordinance that would be locked in based on the approval process, the village, uh, could potentially also, as an alternative, have a supplemental list and then that supplemental list could reflect, uh, recent trends and situations that would not require coming back and amending the zoning ordinance. So for example, if, you know, American Society of Landscape Architects has noted that there, it's a particular species that is, um, desirable and has become accustomed to the Michigan climate, that could be added to this list. Similarly, uh, with regards to prohibitive plantings, if a new, new tree or species of shrub or anything has, uh, becomes susceptible to a disease, it could be added to a supplemental list, you don't have to amend the ordinance. And then also there's this clarifying line that was added in regards to variety of plant materials. You wanna make sure that the, um, standards that we've been applying to the variety of trees also applies to shrubs and plants. To make sure that variety is there to protect actually the investment of the property. And then finally, one of the highlights was, uh, in regards to stormwater management, um, on the bottom of page ten, I mean, top two eleven. Basically, one advantageous thing was that the village has already adopted, uh, stormwater management standards that are already applicable throughout the county. And within those term standards are what we're called best management practices, using different alternatives for stormwater management. If they can't do, uh, if they choose not to do, um, underground storage, if they choose not to use the standard retention plan, they would be, uh, utilizing different, uh, things such as rain gardens, such as dry detention basins and other best management practices. And benefit to them is that according to open county standards, they, the engineers have a specific method where it's, and even using their terminology for, um, best managed practice for channel protection, volume control, to the maximum extent practical, meaning they use a method to determine whether the proposed, uh, revisions are gonna be practical. They're not imposing specific standards from the get-go, they work with the site, based on the site specifics, based on what's being proposed in terms of level of improvements, they use practical standards, so that way they're not imposing anything overly impractical on the site. And this is already required in, by the village because it's already in our, in our general ordinance. So this just substantiates and makes, makes people aware that they have to do these things. And despite all things about the night, but also because it's in the zoning ordinance, you could have the authority to, to take a look at these, required that they submit detailed plans. Because they're gonna do this anyway, whether they do it now or whether they do it later, applicants have to do this stuff. Whether they're spending money on plans before you or before others, they're gonna have to do it. So, um, this is just an example of making sure that all the ordinances in the village work and work. Those are the suggestions from the rest.
Commissioners, does anybody have any questions for Mario in regards to this?
I do. I have some. Um, okay, so some of it has to do with, like, administratively, how, like, there's some, there's some language. If we look at, um.
What page are we?
Uh, where should I start? I should start on page, uh, page two, um, is it section? Seven point two point three. Um, number four, so, like, do you want me to just go through this like line by line?
Steve, you feel there's a lot of questions?
Well, I guess maybe some of these things is like, who, so the, it's from code enforcement. It is, it is basically to, it is, for example, continuous maintenance. Property owners shall require to install and maintain all screening elements associated, um, to failure to maintain required screening, including their placement or removal of plants inconsistent with the approval. The village may, uh, may direct an inspection by performing, okay? So that is, that is something where somebody has to physically come out, physically book, make that happen, that is a, what, that's a code enforcement?
Well, and they might not, well, yeah.
Right?
In some sense, they might do a site plan, which maybe the, the building visitor would be involved, but if it's a, if a tree is growing too tall that they're visionary, for example, then that's code, code enforcement. But if a tree dies, it's not violating the code, it's violating the site plan.
So like, uh, the, uh, the replacement of dead or diseased plant material and material, so that is a. What I'm trying to say with that is that is, is that, is that a true and valid ordinance that is enforceable from a realistic standpoint, or is that just putting it in there and we have that ability to do should we want to? Do you understand what I mean? So.
Based on current language within zoning ordinance, something like, if a tree dri, dies, like, if you guys are here, you're doing your site plan reviews, you're asking for specific changes, so you put a lot of investment into this. If then that tree dies, you know, the applicant, right now, the ordinance does have broad language, which is honestly not very strong for, for the village to hang their head on to require the applicant to go and replace that dead tree you guys want.
Is this complaint driven?
This would, it would be complaint driven, it would be, it could be something that, and honestly.
Hang on a minute, is the village prepared to, that, that's my main concern with this.
Because it's not a proactive, you're proactive, you're on the only necessity. So for instance, if we went down to one of the marijuana places, uh, South Glasskey, and we realized, look, well, those trees they planted a year and a half ago is dead. They're closed and gone now. So the ordinance is saying that we need to go then and contact the building owner, if, if it's, the business owner makes the same, and, and tell them, you're in violation of your site plan, you need to replant that tree when this building now is being built, or maybe not, maybe it's still operating. That probably doesn't matter much, but, um, that's kind of what this is saying.
I, I guess my question is, is that, I read through this, it's wonderful, but what's the checks and balances? Are we, is it a client complaint driven, or is it someone driving around and saying, today I'm looking at dead trees on, for site plans? And is there a dead tree here? Did, they write that down and they go back and they contact the property owner to say that?
Be, be, because that's how we do our, our code enforcement. In theory, is Dan goes around, he sees a lawn, he sees a car that's parked in the grass where it shouldn't be, where a car without plates or car on blocks or.
So it's subjective to the individual doing the checking?
Yes.
And what about, how does the village today handle, uh, a, a complaint?
Well, then he stands out notices, corrections, um, sometimes we get police involved, the car, like we've done recently over on Enslie.
But there's a difference between a vacant or abandoned car than a dead tree?
Cause again, one violates code and one's violating your, this part of the ordinance, which isn't a motor vehicle or something like that, but it's part of the zoning, you know, ordinance or, not zoning ordinance, but, yeah, zoning ordinance. It's part of this zoning ordinance, so it is a violation of the zoning ordinance.
So.
It'd be similar to some.
My end question is, is, is the village prepared to manage according to this?
That, okay, that was, that was, that was the question of I was, I put here, is how are we going to manage and how are we gonna enforce? So those are, those are.
So if we create something here, hand it off to the administration, is that wise business?
It, it's very hard for us to manage and, and gonna tackle, again, luckily a co-op sir came back two days a week and went down for his cancer a couple of years ago because I want anyone who's gone, I couldn't find anybody to take this job. We pay him part-time, sixteen bucks an hour. You know, not a lot of people out there, so that's a lot on him, then we end up going to court perhaps, so it, it's very onerous, let me put it that way. When you get in to pay somebody's site plan approved three years ago, now we have to drive by and see one of those shrubs in their plant base is, is dead. So now that rises, in theory, we then need to go after them for a code violation, it's, it's a zoning ordinance violation. That, because not being there, in practicality, that's very difficult.
Can we, um, can we modify that number to only refer to trees? Because it's dead trees that I think have the greatest impact if they're not dealt with, whereas shrubs and whatnot. I think they have the biggest impact on the character environmentally and everything else. I don't know if that's possible.
That makes it easier for us to manage as well, I mean, again, we're not talking about plantings.
Mm-hmm, yeah, plantings could be grass, could be, yeah, yeah. I mean, plant materials.
I don't have a problem with this, I don't have a problem with this, I'm worried about the administration of it.
The practicality.
Practicality.
Then I'll give you another example of that, it says, um, additional species as recommended by, and this would be section F. The village will maintain a supplemental list, recommended species, which an applicant may reference. Who's gonna maintain that supplemental list?
Oh, you mean in addition to what is in ordinance?
Well, that's what it says, that village, uh, village will maintain a supplemental list of recommended species.
Again, those are recommended, so we're not in here, we can say, look, you know, we're gonna have a hard time finding those people, here's another list we can recommend, without having otherwise, you know, the many ordinance.
Otherwise, you have to change the ordinance all the time.
So you have a supplemental list inside, we, we could, you know, hey, once, here, Mario could say, you know, here, here's five more trees that, that's popular, that fit, that they're native and they fit, that they're, they can handle winter, here's a five more trees, add them to your list.
Okay.
Sure, if we have that list.
And I would, I, I would be happy to help develop any kind of supplemental list to get things started, but I think after that, it's just additional changes that come up, um, recommendations, mostly it's like new diseases that show up.
I'm good, I'm happy with that answer. Um, can I put something else out there? Okay, so, um, it would be section seven point two point four, at least I read it, I mean, at least I actually physically.
Yes.
Read it, um, is that the, uh, sorry, oh, page three, and so it's section A, uh, section A? A one, and it says the, all plant materials shall conform to the American Standard of Nursery sponsored by the American Horticulture Industrial Association. Okay, I looked for it, I found it, it took me a really long time to find the information, but it's a hundred and nine pages long of basically a very similar or, like, it's, like, almost like an ordinance. If I wouldn't have, like, I literally spent forty-five plus minutes trying to just locate it.
Well, that could easily be on a cheat sheet, we did, we did talk about having a informational sheet, which could be on that supplemental, could be a combination.
It's a hundred and nine pages, but it's like, it's deep, deep in the website and you have to like, like, like I said, I literally took forty-five minutes just to find the right document and then once I found the document, it's like, it's.
So I have things to, to remember about this, number one, this language is already in your, number two, it's outdated, the American Association of Nurserymen no longer exists.
Okay.
Number three, when it comes to these kind of standards and these requirements, you know, the building code is like this thick. I don't even know how long the building code is, but, but it's referenced in the zoning ordinance to require them to comply.
Okay.
When it comes to the engineering standards, the engineering standards are in multiple books in multiple locations.
Okay.
So the only intent of this is really to, really just to update what was already in there.
Okay.
But then also to, to reference the fact that the zoning ordinance needs to work with lots of other ordinance, you know, like, there's so many things out there. And they're there for a reason, like, with the building code, you know, the, the building code could be shocked to heck by tons of people because they don't believe that those standards are required for a safe building. building. But that's all they're trying to do is make this a safe building. And then here, we're just trying to make sure that, and, you know, that the language is already existing, that it's, people, you know, and I'll be honest with you, I wouldn't know that size and I wouldn't know that, but like the applicants, when they come in, they, they can use this as reference.
Because it's pointing to something.
Yeah, exactly. You got to point them in some direction. And then, and then the, the, you know, and also think about this too, you know, this is applying to developments. So even though people might think that, you know, you're spending 2.1 million dollars, you should just trust them, there needs to be some standards within the ordinance that they have to abide by. So I think, uh, with regards to this, we, we're just trying to, you know, update it to, to make sure that we're not falling behind.
It also supports that other component, which is the requirement of a landscape plan. That means someone has to, has to develop a landscape plan with every site plan now, if, if this is adopted anyway. And that person should be a professional and be able to utilize those kind of documents, even though someone like you or me might have a hard time finding information, just like you made, made the point about the building code.
And then one other key point that I, that I, I think has to be brought up is, as the planning commission, you already have authority and then this one even gives you more broad authority to modify these standards. You guys can determine when something is applicable, based on, and I think that's important because it's based on the size and scale of the project. If someone's just doing a 900-square-foot addition and they have to come to you because the minimum standard is 750 and they just do it a little bit more, you do have the authority to know what's practical and to know, all right, none of these standards really apply in this particular case. But if in other cases, when they are building, you know, a, a large-scale building, you want to have that detail behind you so you can say with, with confidence, hey, you know, we want to make sure that it's the new construction, those new investments are, are up to, up to snuff for the modern standards. Because that, that, then that protects the community, the village, and to make sure that the village is being developed the same way as every other community in, in the area in open county. You know?
Any, any other questions or does someone like to make a motion? The motion would be tonight is to approve this?
No, no. What I would suggest, you need to have a public hearing.
So you've got to amend the public, you've got to amend the ordinance, so you have to set up a public hearing.
So, and the good thing is then you could, the motion, if you're, if you're so inclined, you know, based on how long we've worked on it, I think you can make a motion to have a public hearing, we can see what other than the public, we can see what public-
I just have one more question. Why 30%?
That's a, that's a standard. The 30% material, yeah, that's a general standard, is my understanding. I didn't, we didn't come up with that on our own.
Yeah, one and three. And if we wanted to modify it, we could, but I think also in the past, for example, if, if someone built a site and they put in 10 ash trees, well, with the Emmerlash Board, all 10 trees are gone.
Oh, yeah, it's a diversification issue, yeah. That's why.
Correct.
Am I, my, my reference to the right one, the 30%?
Yeah, yeah, I, I know why we want to do it, but I, I was just curious why specifically 30%? That's the only reason why.
We're 30%.
And so, once again, you're right, it is like a sta, uh, it's not a standard, it's not anything written in stone anywhere. It's, it's something that's a recommendation. If you did want to change it, you could. I mean, you could have more, you could have less. I think the only reason I mentioned the, the whole Emmerlash thing is like, if something does come, then you think, all right, is it, is it okay to lose half the trees or use a third of the trees or, you know, the other way? What's matter, but, but it's not written in stone. If you wanted to change that, like, you could. But 30 is, is the industry-
It's, it's like an industry standard, yeah, I guess you could talk.
Do we have any more questions?
Comments.
Comments? There's a lot of work in this. I appreciate the work. I did not read every tree. I'll be very honest about it. I skimmed over some of those. There were some really interesting titles of trees or names of trees in there that I had. Thank you.
Go ahead.
To your, to your point, if you were to make a motion, it would be to proceed with the, uh, the next, that being the public hearing in open, the first reading of the-
You know, I'd like to make a motion that we proceed with a public hearing to post this, uh, at the next convenient meeting time?
It would be the next, the first meeting, or the second meeting in September, I would be the first meeting.
Okay. Well, there's a lot of timing involved with the public hearing. So I need a second.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Uh, roll call?
Vasder?
Yes.
Dallar?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Hyler?
Yes.
Nold?
Yes. Thank you. Uh, on the number nine, any members from the public? It would be a three-minute limit. No members from the public? Consultants and administration comments. Reports from Oxford Township Planning Commission. Uh, the planning commission of Oxford Township is diligently, diligently working on their master plan to try to move that ahead. We are interviewing, interviewing and receiving input from some of our largest property owners to see what they'd like to see on the future land use map. We have another meeting scheduled. I'm sorry, I lost the date, but there's another meeting scheduled. And I know the 15th of September, another large property owner is coming to the, uh, to, to have a report given to the planning commission, what they'd like to see for future land use map. Any report from the ZBA?
They have had one in a while.
And DDA?
I met the other night. They're moving forward with a plan that was approved by Palop the week before with a couple of crosswalks at East Birdie and West Bird. It could help those reversing from the north, the south park lands to the north, that over, back and forth, the east side and the east side.
More walkable.
Interesting, thank you. Uh, commissioner comments, for Leslie.
Uh, just glad to be going to the public hearing on this. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, board. Mo?
I voted against the crosswalk. Here you go, that's all you have.
Thank you.
They're in weird spots.
Tom?
Very good, thank you, John.
I walk all the time and I don't turn this time, I was crossing the middle of the street, that's why.
Then I'd like to make, I have no comments for tonight. I think the board asked a lot of good questions tonight. I appreciate the input and all, all the work that went into gathering those questions. Uh, next is, I need to re-adjourn at 8:58.
I'm moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned, thank you.